Criminal ended up leaking out, so I don't know.
Very interesting.
We might have been the only trial that actually happened, but there might have been the other.
I've also never seen where they speak the jury and start the trial on the same day. Usually I hear people, you know, the first day is all about getting people.
My guess is there was a scheduled two-day trial, a scheduled three-day trial, and a scheduled five-day trial. And we was the three-day trial.
And you're up early.
I made it.
Wow, good, I had pressed our president, but you could be a little bit late.
It worked out.
Fantastic, glad you could make it on time.
It worked out, and then you came here? Sorry.
Michelle, how did fresh food day go today, or local food or?
So Chrome wants me to verify that it's.
Middle school, right, today?
Well, really middle and high today.
Oh, you did both today? Oh, well, good, glad I went along. Oh, where was I today? Oh, Rachel. Uh, Rachel, in a meeting I was in, send your praises to that group and your teens.
Oh, you're sure?
Amazing, all of you were yesterday.
I'm very focused when we walk in. I got my D face, I gotta strap in. That's right, as my daughter would say, lock in. That's the phrase nowadays.
Is that the phrase? Alright.
You gotta lock in. Okay. She was vacuuming the garage. And it was asking her side mirror.
Oh, that's a classic.
Yep. Fortunately, it looks like no damage to the garage for purpose. But it's built solidly itself.
It's a big way to earn it.
Stacy and I were both already gone, I took Stacy to the airport early this morning and was ready to work.
I go in the mornings, so I go for normal things.
So she managed to get some duct tape and get the mirror. It's on with some duct tape.
Look at how resourceful and meticulous she is.
And what she's going on is like, she's not in trouble, she's not gonna get punished, but she's gonna get to take responsibility.
So I got one for you.
She's gonna get to pay to replace the mirror, and I don't know who knows what's gonna come.
Hey, actually, so I have some information for you.
Yes, sir.
Because probably two weeks ago, my daughter came down in tears because she took her driver's side side mirror off. She went too fast into the garbage, and it must have been really heavy, but it snapped, you know, heaps. Now, I don't know what kind of car she's got, but I looked it up now, I gotta be careful because the last time I tried to do it yourself, car thing, it went way outside of my scope fast. But this one, I mean, depending upon the car, so for my daughter, it's like an 08 Honda Accord, and you gotta just take this, you gotta use the little trim thing, but you can just take it off. And I got a side, driver's side mirror for about fifty bucks. From Walmart is one, but also Rock Auto, you ever do Rock Auto? It's just like a Rock Auto, like all in one word.
I was thinking for a minute you were gonna say Rock Island or something.
No, I know, I always think of Rock Island, because they actually have their own car shop right there, on the arsenal. But it just look up Rock Auto on Google, and it'll bring it up. But you can say your car type, your year, and then you just kinda keep going down, body, mirror, side mirror, and it'll show you a bunch of options and things, but, uh, because I was worried about that too, my god, this is gonna be. But the reason I made it up is it's currently duct taped, or Gorilla Tapes inside as well. So you, they got, they came together, they have two duct taped guys, some mirrors.
Alright, good evening, everyone, it is six o'clock. We have a quorum here. We'll start this board meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome, everyone, today is Thursday, September twenty-fifth. Tonight's board meeting. Where our mission, mission of our community district is to inspire, empower, unite our students as community of learners in their pursuit of excellence. We have a motion to put the agenda.
So.
Second.
Roll call, please.
We don't have our second.
Yes, the one is asleep at the table here, because I'm trying to understand her sheet. Okay, roll call.
Give me a few more jobs.
Smith, Smith Pace.
Here.
Castro.
Yes, I know, yes.
Castro. Champion.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Lynch.
That would be a yes for me.
McGivern.
Yes.
Smithson.
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Oh, my goodness, here we go. Five.
I'll bring you through the rest of it.
Okay, guys. Um, six, one, zero, I think.
Six, zero, one.
Six, zero, one, thank you. Let me just practice this.
We've got your back, don't worry about it.
The, uh, tertiary or quadriennary on our board secretary tonight.
Those are words I've done, I'm sure, if I can figure out right now.
Yeah. Alright, the first is the boys cross-country, I'll take this one. Recognition, A.G. Wiley becomes the new school record holder, that's a big deal. Four-five K, topping Eric Goss's fifteen-twenty-five from nineteen ninety-nine, a long record there. With a fifteen-oh-eight, smashed it. Andrew Hendon, he then moves up to third in school history with a fifteen-twenty-seven. Congratulations to him, that's a big deal, and your name will could be up there for a long time. Alright, student representative's report.
We don't have anybody tonight.
Just the last couple of weeks.
I think they're still maybe sorting themselves out with the school year.
It's just, there's a lot going right up, right now, and homecoming and other things, so.
Okay. Moving along, present statement, this is this portion of the meeting, those members of the audience listening to address this body, this is your time to come forward. Please check in with the board secretary, keep your comments to three minutes. I don't see anyone non-staff in the audience tonight, so we'll move ahead to the BEA report. Emily.
Glad to see you again, it's been a while.
Yes, I mean, I could have gave it one mic, yours is a little light.
Yeah, but we need the mic.
Yeah, no, that's great, my voice is really loud, I'm like the teacher in the corner that you can hear, it's just because I have a booming voice, if you will. Well, it does feel good to be back, and I'm happy, I'm actually excited to be here, I couldn't be here last time, um, because I was with family, but, um, some of you guys saw me last time in a hot dog costume. And since then, I've kept the tradition going every Friday, so last Friday, I was at Pickle, and actually, two weeks ago, Hoover staff, like, just randomly showed up in their costumes and greeted students, and it was so fun, so yes, if you're wondering if I'm dressed enough tomorrow, the answer is yes, but I still don't know what, quite yet. Um, and those are like.
Tomato, perhaps.
Yeah, or pizza, I'm teaching fractions right now, so anything that will bring kids into fractions, probably pizza or something, or a donut, we'll see. Um, but those are like the little things that we've been able to do to kinda spark a little bit of joy. Um, and speaking of the little things, that's what our organization can be really proud of, and I wanted to share just a little bit of that. Um, these small and meaningful steps that we've been taking over the last few years, um, it's leading us to where we are today. Um, from our check-in connects with our most recent one being this week, to our monthly building admin and rep meetings, we're continually building on the foundation that we're here for kids and committed to doing what is best for students in Bednord. And I'm really actually thrilled from like just a chat session and a meeting that I was with, Miley, we were talking about how do we get out there more, talk about HR-related things, but then in like a friendly space, like, so like, just that's approachable and stuff. And, um, doing like donuts and discussions and stuff like that will be like underway here soon. And I think it's just a really great way for, um, districts to build those relationships and to be out there, to be seen, to answer questions, and it's a really great thing. And we shared that at our BEA meeting to our reps to share out, and it's been, it's been a great response. And I think any way that we can get ourselves out there in a positive way is a great, is a great thing in general. Um, so build on that momentum, we re-engaged with our IDPS process with our first meeting last week, and training our team, training for our teams is coming up at the end of October, as well as another meeting with our local council, with our other union reps. Um, it, it is held quarterly, and it's really, it's a great way for us to connect, but then also celebrate the work that's happening within our local districts and recognizing our growing membership in, um, our local councils. We had our very first BEA meeting, and I feel to report that everything brought forward by members was resolved at the building level or something that we could hate, not care of right away. So that's something really to be proud of, just that proactive approach and how we're able to address things right away. Um, while we celebrate, we know in reality the political environment and recent legislative changes in Iowa are impacting classroom teachers and students across the state and district. And I'm in no way dismissing the exhaustion teachers are feeling here at our local level, but we also need to recognize that it's not anything new, it's statewide. And so I just have a thing, as we go into school board elections and everything like that, I think it's really important to recognize that teacher shortages are real, the stress is real. Um, there are surveys out there that are giving like a slew of percentages, but I think it's just important to realize that there is an increased demand on teacher expectations, and we're all pulling from the same amount of minutes. And so how do we as a district work together to kind of be the leaders in that? Um, then we have our policy pressures, you know, you guys do your policy reviews and go through that, but we have those state policies, decisions that are coming, and it's affecting all of us. Um, and so the burnout, the increased demands, the class sizes, all restrictions, we need to make sure that we're staying informed and that we're communicating that. Um, so here in Bednord, we have a choice, we can have these challenges that are coming to us divide us, or we can come together and demonstrate what unity looks like in action. We can show what educators, administrators, families, board members work, do, working side by side, and we could protect what matters the most, it's our students and our community. And that's how we lead, that's how Bednord can set the example for our districts across Iowa, by showing that a community united behind its public schools is stronger than the pressures pulling it apart, that we're gonna be starting to see via text, the language, what we're doing. As we look forward towards the school board elections, I want to stress this, for decades, BEA and ISK have invited school board member candidates to interview with our associations, and this year, those conversations are gonna continue to happen. How are you gonna support our teachers? How will you protect and fund special education? How will you ensure our district has the resources to give every child the best possible education? How are you going to sell our district and the community? And to anybody listening, um, and here in our community, how do you stay engaged? Attend meetings, share stories, vote, advocate, and let's just not respond to what's happening here in Bednord. We have to know that it's statewide, what are we doing? And really, together, we can do better, we can insist on better for everybody, so that's my plug on that.
Just one question for you.
I will make me answer it.
No, you said that teachers are being impacted by state-level policy. And you don't have to answer this now, just in your next check-in connect, if there's something small we can add to our legislative priorities and we can socialize, that we can.
Absolutely.
Mention that up.
I have a list, and I think it'd be too long to list here, but I think there's a lot of things that.
Yeah, things, just, I mean, the, the, not the big things, but, but there's some small things, they're more receptive to.
Absolutely, yep.
Um, so if you have one or two small things that we can use the role of our elevator pitch, that would be helpful.
Yep, certainly we can do that.
Okay.
Alright, awesome, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Melissa.
Alright, um, that's, they're out tonight.
Uh, Melissa is not here tonight.
Okay. Alright, then over to you.
Alright, um, good evening. So we had our, um, visit by the Iowa Supreme Court last week on the sixteenth, um, and in talking with the justices that were here and their liaison that helped us coordinate the event, Steve Davis, they emphatically reported that our event had the largest turnout for the court hearing and reception that they've had at any of the events they've held at high schools. They were very pleased with the turnout and excited by the interactions. I think we were finally helping the last few at the reception leave around nine forty-five, ten o'clock that night. So people were engaged, there was great conversation going on, um, and it's good to see some of you there. I know some of you had competing conflicts, but appreciate, um, those of you from the board that were able to be there and participate in the evening. Um, I also want to give a thank you to Justice Waterman. Um, he spent the morning on the sixteenth with high school students in both large and small groups, interacting, answering questions, um, he got a tour from some of our students, um, about, from the high school where they got to highlight the things that they're super proud of. Um, that was fun, I got to attend that. And then, um, a special thank you also to Justice Oxley, who spent the morning, the next morning on the seventeenth with our mock-trial students at middle school. Um, I might have texted in the middle of that event saying, please rearrange this meeting. Um, I was so engaged that about hour and a half went by so quickly. Um, our students were incredibly articulate, their questions were just very thoughtful. And every couple of them, I was like, whoa, how would I answer that? Um, and as I walked out with Justice Oxley and her intern, she just looked at me and she said, that was incredible. Um, she said their questions, um, and interactions, um, were, they were more articulate than even some of the high schoolers that she gets to spend time with around the state. So we are grateful for both of them, um, sharing their wisdom, their experiences, their backgrounds, and just spending time with our students. So it was overall, um, a wonderful opportunity for our community and for our students and staff. As Emily mentioned, we held our first IBPS meeting last week. Great start to the year, very collaborative conversation. And we're looking forward to our annual training with our trainers in late October at our next meeting, so that'll be a day and a half, um, where we also will be welcoming some new members into the training process. Um, they won't necessarily participate in our monthly meetings, but part of this process is to have, um, additional people in all four groups trained, so that as some either decide to step off of the, you know, more formal monthly process, we have others to come in, but it's also a great way for others to understand the process and, um, learn what that process is all about. So we're excited about that, our trainers are confirmed, um, for the two days in October. Um, as Emily also talked about, Miley and I met with Emily and Trent for our monthly check-in on Tuesday. It's a really good conversation and really centered around, um, more proactive stuff because things were going well, um, and how can we, as the upcoming legislative session, um, gets ready to gear up, how can we work with our legislators across the state, local, but also others? Um, and I think Emily said it well, you know, understand the impact of decisions that are made, and how do we work to help support implementation if new laws are passed that relate to education? So look forward to additional conversations and meetings with them. I had the opportunity to be in Des Moines last week, I believe now. Um, I had been asked and selected to serve as one of sixteen practitioners across the state to serve on a special education work group, it was a really neat opportunity. Really, the initial question that put this work group together was how we identify students to be eligible for special education. So Iowa's the only state in the country that uses a non-categorical model. Um, everybody else is, uses a categorical model, I will spare the details at the table. Um, but really where our conversation led throughout the day is there are advantages and disadvantages to both models, but how do we create more consistency and coherence across the state of, once we've identified through an assessment process the strengths and areas of need for students who qualify for special education services, how do we ensure that that data is then translated into a meaningful, working, individual education plan that then will ultimately lead, lead to better student outcomes for students? So, um, fantastic conversation, there were, um, there were, as one other superintendent in the group, um, they had to make sure of those of us that have come from out-of-state, other states, to bring our experiences in, as well as people who have served in Iowa for their careers. Um, there was some AEA representation, there were teachers, there were directors of special education, um, sociologists there, it was just a nice cross-group of practitioners. Um, it was a really, um, it was, it was a great conversation, and I look forward to seeing where that goes and what our next steps look like. Um, we're getting ready to go into homecoming week, always a fun and exciting week in our district. Actually, we kind of kicked that off today with the pep assemblies at each of our elementary schools. Um, Miley and I had the opportunity to meet with some of our elementary principals this afternoon for a meeting, and they had just come in after their pep assemblies had happened, and they said, it was great, the energy was wonderful. Really appreciative that they've expanded that assembly to also include students who represent other co-curricular types of activities, instead of just football and dance and, or gold dust serves and cheerleaders, so that kids could start seeing the other ways they can get involved, um, when they enter middle school and high school. So that was really good, that they've incorporated some feedback, um, over these last few years. But again, I so appreciate, um, our student council advisors at the high school, as well as our students who, um, after a few years ago, working with me with the vision to ensure that we did this district-wide from our young dis-l learners all the way through high school, that it becomes a district, um, event, and it's just, it's fun to see it happen. Um, next week has a variety of activities, dress-up days, powder puff football game, we've got our annual homecoming parade next Thursday at six o'clock. Um, looking forward to seeing our community come out and celebrating with them, it's always a fun, a fun evening. And then we wrap up next Friday with our middle school and high school pep assemblies, as well as our football game against Cedar Falls. So should be a great week, weather looks fantastic next week for this. So, um, I thank you to our high school team that puts, helps really lead this work. And then to end, our partners from Center for Model Schools were in this week. Each of our building principals had the opportunity to spend the day working side by side with their coaches. Each principal has an identified coach, um, with Center for Model Schools, and it is their day to reflect on practice, to get into classrooms, just to, what is it that they need in their building needs, and it's time just for them to grow and to learn and have a thought partner with them. Um, feedback I got from principals I talked to, as well as the coaches that were here from Center for Model Schools, was it was a fantastic start to this second part of our partnership with them. So it's been a good week, good couple of weeks, very busy, as Emily alluded, so thank you.
Alright, thank you, moving along, do you motion for the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Castro. Champion.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Smithson.
Yes.
Smith Pace.
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero, one.
Alright, now first presentation with even.
Yes, I've asked our nutrition services manager, Michelle Reese, to come, and I really want her to have this opportunity to celebrate the innovative ideas that she has brought, um, to her department, and the work that her and her team have done, um, to ensure that students, not just during the school year, but over the summer, had access to high-quality, um, meals, and the partnership that she forged with the city of Bednord. So, Michelle, thank you for being here tonight.
No problem, I always like the opportunity to share the hard work that my staff do for our community. A lot of times, um, nutrition services does get looked over. We, um, I always like to showcase the hard work and dedication our individuals take in our district and our community to provide the services for them. Um, so. Um, so we're gonna just go over real quick, um, um, how we determine eligibility for summer meals. Summer meals is just a little different than the regular school year. Um, talk about community partnerships, the grant funding we receive to help support all these initiatives over the summer, um, our paying outreach that we do to engage the community, and at the end, we'll talk about our participation summary for this past summer. Um, real quick, um, the nutrition team and I have been working to develop a mission statement that also aligns with our goals, as well as the district's goals. So this is a mission that we carry out all year round, um, that every student is nourished with helpful, sustainable, and inclusive meals that support educational excellence and well-being. So we'll talk about some of the things we did over the summer, and at the end, we'll just do a little highlight from the last school year that ties in, um, everything that we've done to support this mission for our community. Um, areas of eligibility, um, for those who are unfamiliar, how eligibility is determined to host summer meal sites? It is based on free-reduced numbers within your school boundaries. So this table is just cut out of our areas of eligibility. So it is, um, free-reduced numbers that are fifty percent or greater. Um, and then we also use community eligibility provision, um, data that's our identified student population percentage that's greater than forty percent. So our identified student population are our students and families who qualify for direct free certification for meals. So that's who, um, that's where I manage, like, our direct certification list for our families who receive SNAP benefits, foster, homeless, Medicaid, those are the, um, those are the percentages represented there. So as you can see, we have Neil Armstrong, Mark Twain, and Grant Wood with numbers that meet eligibility and both criteria. As you can see, that is a lot of area to cover for families who are in need. Um, when you, when you look at also like enrollment-wise, you're looking at, and that also covers some of our, with middle school, the red is in there, based on residential data. So we have hosted at middle school in the past, but with the work being done this summer, we couldn't really provide meals when there was no power, doesn't quite work that way. So, um, so looking at all of this, all this area, it's like, well, there's a lot of people in need, how do we access them? So I started looking at Davenport, Davenport does meals to the park. And I'm like, okay, so let's, I started looking at parks in our community that fall within the boundaries of our three eligible areas, and then looking at different ways we do summer programming, and how we can host at different sites just to get more area covered. Um, so, um, that's where we started reaching out with our community partners. And we reached out to John Myers, the director of Bednord Parks and Rec. He actually reached out, he just started a leave in January with the city, and reached out to the district to host a meeting, and when I found that out, I was like, can I get a seat at the table? Because I was like, let's, I, I've been wanting to do this for a while, and I just really had that opportunity. It was a great opportunity, Dr. Morris and I sat with him, and he talked about his home community where he just moved from, and they, he, they did summer meals in the park there as well. And it was just a very natural transition to, hi, let me tell you about my idea I have for some of our parks in our community. And he was on board, and this conversation was early April. So the fact that, like, my application for the state has to be turned in by the end of April to implement meals in June, it was a very quick turnaround, and it was a great partnership. Um, John got his team on board, um, and they were all for it. Got more kids, particularly get more families and kids to parks. So we offered meals this summer, and we bounced, every other day, between McManus Park and Edgewood Park. So that way, we were covering families that were down the hill, closer to the river, and then up top the hill, um, that kind of hit the Mark Twain and Neil Armstrong little pockets that we weren't serving. Um, and then, uh, we also served at Neil Armstrong Elementary as a site, as well as Grant Wood, where we, we hosted all of the, um, curriculum enrichment programs. Um, we only did lunch only, and we rotated every other day. Uh, so we operated three weeks in June and three weeks in July, just like we did every other location. Other community partners we had, you know, we partnered with Field of Family, which is a food hub out of Iowa City that leads to Central Iowa and the farm school movement. Um, I presented before and shared that, um, farm, the farm table movement is a big value I have for our, um, community, for our nutrition program. We actually celebrated today the Iowa Eat Local Day at our middle school and high school, where we brought in local ingredients for our students at, um, the middle high, middle school, high school. And at the end of October, I planned on bringing local apples for our elementary students, so that way they get that appreciation for local and what's in season as well. So with Field of Family, they come and deliver, they deliver to us once a week. And we procure different things like produce and dairy products, we do a lot of like their yogurts, cheeses. They actually work with us to get. They actually work with us to get Donahue cinnamon rich cheese from Donahue. So that way we try to keep as local to East Iowa as possible. And then so that that picture up top is an assortment of different fresh fruit veggies and produce that we receive from them. And then we also partnered with Cravers Little Red Bar out of Taylor Ridge, Illinois. That way we actually brought someone from the Quad Cities in to provide different produce with us. So the bottom picture is a sample of a strawberry rhubarb sauce. And we had some graham crackers where luckily kids could try rhubarb because not many kids eat rhubarb these days. I enjoy rhubarb, but I might be, I grew up in North Central Iowa and the rural community that, that was just kind of part of the palate.
In the right time of year.
What?
In the right time of year.
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, we got a lot of strawberries and rhubarb in June. So it was perfect meat season for us. That way they could taste something that was in season. Grants, so we were the recipients of one of the Iowa Summer Meal Expansion Grants provided by the state of Iowa. The grant total we received was sixteen thousand six hundred dollars to split over three years. Grant funding started in June two thousand and twenty-four and the period will end in September of two thousand and twenty-six. We use this funding to help support the local procurement. That way we can support our local growers and the additional labor it takes to operate multiple locations. So the past two years, we were able to, for labor wise, the grant helped cover four positions. And it covered all of their labor for both months. So that this grant has been a huge help to help support these meals that we provide. Nutrition and marketing outreach. So we have to get the word out there. So we did a lot of flyers that we share with surrounding schools because we have Davenport next to us that does provide free meals over the summer. There's us, but after that, there's not any eligible areas up until Clinton when you're looking at Iowa going along the river. So we kind of have to cover a lot of ground. And so we reach out to North Scott, we reach out to Pleasant Valley, just so that way those who are in the area can have access to free meals. We don't discriminate. Everyone can come. There's no paperwork involved, no questions asked. We, I attended the Edgewood Park Public Input Event, which I believe I saw Director Larkin at with his son. And the engagement, there was engagement with the community with the Parks and Rec, trying to get input on like the innovations they want to do with the, at Edgewood and improvements. So then we had, that was opportunity for the community to come and talk to me about things that were on menu. They had questions about funding and just the general, how summer meals work. TV interview that we, that I conducted at McManus Park during a service day. It was actually a conceited service day, so it was a great chance to show off what our district can do for our community. And we partnered with Angie Sharps, who is the director of communications for Ednord Parks and Rec. So with her, with her tag of the, at Ednord Parks and Rec, we were able to expand our network of our media messages to there. So that way it just spreads the word further beyond what our current outlets are. This summer, I actually presented at a, the state of Iowa School Nutrition Conference at, with marketing and outreach. Just so that way to share what we're doing at a state level for marketing outreach for our child nutrition program. So that way other directors can take that back to their district and help promote their own programs. At the end of the day, participation, because with summer meals, we are a hundred percent funded by participation. So that is where all, that's where all of our funding comes from. So our, the table below, on the slide shows up our end of the year participation numbers. So lunch at the pop-ups, we had did six hundred eighty-four lunches. At the school sites, we did three thousand two hundred forty-five. So at the end of the year, we did serve three thousand nine hundred twenty-nine lunches and one thousand four hundred ninety-three breakfasts, all within thirty-one days. So from this, we can see that twenty-one percent of our summer lunches were served just at the parks alone. This is also including there was a day where it was torrential rainstorm. I remember being at admin looking outside. I'm like, uh-uh. No, I'm gonna melt. We're not gonna serve meals today. And then there was also lightning. And then in the month of July, we had that two-week heat day where it was weather, like the heat advisory warnings. And we still had some people come to the parks in heat. So even in, no matter what the climate is, we did see a need for these services. And at the end of the year, we served twenty-five percent more lunches in two thousand twenty-five than we did in two thousand twenty-four. So with the expansion of multiple sites and with the park partnership, I give the credit to there. So since I've started, we've probably, each year since I've been, been in this position, we have grown our summer participation in the numbers by just expanding and working on marketing and outreach. Real briefly, wanted to take an opportunity just to recap on the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I know we were talking about summer, but I can't help but just show how proud I am of my staff. This year, this past year and what we're continuing to do this year is incorporate more homemade, less prepackaged food for our students to reduce that processing and increase the amount of meals that are actually made on-site and reduce how many vendor days we have at our like middle school and high school. We engage more in connections and linking different departments. So on Thanksgiving, the day we love for Thanksgiving, we reached out to the central office to have different people in the admin team come out and help serve. Cause we did a big Thanksgiving spread for our students and they all got to help participate in that. Just have that hands-on interaction, kind of get out to the buildings. And then we also were the recipients of two national recognition awards. One in the innovation of the preparation of school meals, which is for our efforts to reduce the prepackaged items and make homemade and reduce our sodium, as well as the innovation of school lunch makeover. So this was our work at Ednord High School when I know getting rid of Chick-fil-A was a very touchy subject. However, students are still eating. They, we have an alternative that we are making as meeting the child nutrition guidelines. We built with that since we're reduced to sodium. That way we're making more ways to play on like restaurant food. So we do, we just got new equipment there and we, downstairs, we're making more customized made-to-order items. So a student can have choices on what they eat versus just being served it. So they can customize it to their flavor palette versus just the same palette. We're seeing higher purchases. That's probably our busiest station. It's like our subway line. And this year we started making our own bread for the sandwich line. Where it's like a subway like kind of foot long that we cut in half and we're baking, proving and baking that in-house. That's been a huge success. Like I said, I couldn't, we couldn't do anything, we couldn't serve our kids without the amazing team, our nutrition, nutrition services staff. And in a couple of weeks, we do have National School Lunch Week, so it's even a better time to acknowledge and recognize the hard work they do.
Any questions, Michelle?
Thank you for inviting me into the way that I always do. I appreciate it.
You do a lot of work for us outside of school hours. That's, that's recognized and noticed. Thank you for all the support you give.
Thank you.
That was great to hear about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle.
All right, mileage pay rate. Do we have a motion?
Well, we have a presentation.
Why don't we do the motion and then the presentation?
Sure, someone wants to make a motion?
Yep. I move that we approve the mileage reimbursement rate as presented.
Second.
Okay, pause for discussion.
And I'll ask Miley to jump in if I miss something. So as we gave you all some background in our weekly communication to you, it came to our attention recently that contractually, somewhere along the line, there was some very specific language that we were to reimburse mileage at the state level. Well, somewhere along the line, the state level did change because there had been some time in the past where the state reimbursement rate was different from the IRS reimbursement rate. And they are now aligned and so we had staff recognize that and bring that to our attention. They're a hundred percent correct. The contract drives that. So before you tonight, we are recommending that we move our mileage pay reimbursement rate from forty cents per mile to seventy cents per mile, which is the current IRS rate. Now if the IRS rate goes down or goes up, obviously we have to make those adjustments as well.
I have a simple question. I think this is long overdue.
I don't disagree.
Instead of specifying the mileage rate, why don't we say at the current IRS rate? So when it fluctuates, we don't have to come back and re-leg, re-legislate it.
Yeah, it's actually the best.
Great recommendation. Yeah, I don't have any issues with that if we want to amend the motion.
Excuse me, can I amend your motion?
Yeah, so I would like to amend the motion to approve the mileage reimbursement rate at the rate of the current IRS reimbursement rate.
By doing a second amendment, if that's okay, makes most sense.
Okay.
Let's step this up down.
Roll call please.
Champion.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director McGivern.
Yes.
Director Smithson.
Yes.
Director Smith Pace.
Yes.
Director Castro. Motion carries six zero one. Running key lines.
August financials, do we have a motion?
I move we approve the August financials as presented.
All right, Mr. Reed, you have.
Well, good evening. Great to see you all again. Just as a point of personal privilege, as Michelle Reese's direct supervisor, she's really underselling the great work that her team does. And to be recognized nationally at any level, I think is awesome, given how many schools and districts are in this country. I know this district has been recognized nationally in the past for different reasons, but for nutrition services, I think it's pretty cool. So I just want to congratulate her and her team again. So I was here two weeks ago and I told you that July was boring and normal. Well, I'm here to report again that August was boring and normal. I think that's good considering if we, nothing else, we need financial stability in this district and our role. So nothing of interest really to point out for all of you. Activities, turning a profit again, which is great. I've been cautioned that activities can be a bugaboo. And so I just want to point out that it did turn a profit and the balance keeps growing, which is great as we move into our fall sports and kick off or get set up for our winter sports. Any questions? Nothing seen.
All right, have you seen them? Call and roll call?
Okay. Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director McGivern.
Yes.
Director Smithson.
Yes.
Director Smith Pace.
Yes.
Director Castro. Director Champion.
Yes.
Director Larkin.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero one. Thank you, Tyler.
I'll take the motion and the second firing policies.
Looks like you want to take it. If that's the case, go for it. Otherwise I'll. Oh, no. I move we approve the policies presented under five point oh four. I can second that.
Okay, roll call please.
Okay. Director McGivern.
Yes.
Director Smithson.
Yes.
Director Smith Pace.
Yes.
Director Castro. Director Champion.
Yes.
Director Larkin.
Yes.
Director Lynch.
Oh, sure.
We're trying to rattle me tonight, right? I know. Motion carries six zero one.
All right, any further policies? Do we have discussion here?
This one is really a direct update related to some recent legislation and changes. Please let me know if you have questions tonight or prior to our next board meeting. And it's also part of the Iowa desk audit for all school districts this year.
All right, moving on to five point zero six. I'll take this one.
Multiple sentences.
Yes, so I guess we need a motion here and then we'll talk about it.
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-five IASB Board Delegate Assembly Representative.
More specifically.
Oh, do you need me to read that? That we approve the BCST Board President or designees appointed by the Board President to be the IASB Representative at the twenty twenty-five IASB Annual Delegate Meeting.
I'll second that.
So due to uncertainty about who's going and if anyone even goes, rather than, you know, we generally put you down. I just put this in there to give a lot of flexibility before the meeting. Which really just comes down to who's available and who's going. And that may not be known until right to the end there. So that's the reason, flexibility.
That made perfect sense.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Okay. And roll call, roll call? Sure.
All right, Director Smithson.
Yes.
Director Smith Pace.
Yes.
Director Castro. Director Champion.
Yes.
Director Larkin.
Yes.
Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director McGivern.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero one.
Wow, six forty-two. I wonder where I am right now. All right, board communications, let's start on my left here and we'll go clockwise.
Wow, feels like we should go into a closed session or something for, just to kill some time. No, thank you all.
I just wanted to compliment the event for the Supreme Court. It was wonderful. And I was really impressed with the students who asked questions. And afterwards, at the reception, there were quite a few student comments that, well, they were really impressive.
I too was at the Iowa Supreme Court oral arguments. I had the opportunity to talk to some of the Supreme Court members and they were very impressed with the students' questions. With the number of people who were attending. You could tell that they were having a good time, especially at the reception. Like they really wanted to talk to students. My student had a chance to talk with them. Actually, it was really a great event. And they were impressed with the questions coming from our students. So I was really happy about that. I know we have lots of things coming up with homecoming. I hope that people get a chance to get out and see what's happening in the buildings for homecoming. I love that we are incorporating the elementary schools and the middle school into our homecoming celebrations. So it's not just about the high school. I love including all of those groups in there. And I think that's something that we can get the whole community together in. And I want to echo Emily's conversation about working together with the community to make sure that we're, we're doing our best to do what's right for our students and our community. So I really like that.
I don't have anything to take.
All right, I want to say appreciation as always to teachers, staff and everybody that's doing all the work you're doing for the school year. I know it's pretty much in full swing and then you turn right around. And as I mentioned before, we have homecoming coming up. I know there's a lot that students, that teachers, that staff, administration and everybody's doing in preparation for that. So I appreciate it. I look forward, it's always a great time. It's always a great time for the community to come together. So I look forward to, to all those events and I just want to always say appreciate everybody's work, hard work. Thank you.
All right, I want to take a moment and circle back to the last meeting and close the loop regarding the school play. I do like to get back to people. And we heard a lot of well-thought-out public comments regarding this production. We looked into it and evaluating the inputs to stop the production, create new production in the time between now and showtime dates in the calendar. It's just a bridge too far. So we're going to move ahead with the production and we try. So we're going to move ahead with the production, and we trust those. And overseeing it and the students involved will put on a well-executed and talented show. And I want to emphasize to others that spoke with concerns about the production, that you're right, that selecting this production created some controversy. And there were other options that could have been selected earlier in the decision cycle that may have been helpful. And I ask for some grace on this one, and we will do better on messaging. And there's more good things coming. No one in our organization shows up to work looking to intentionally create a controversy. And this was an unintended consequence, and many are feeling regret. It is now time to learn from this event and move forward, and I will be supporting our staff in execution of their duties. We are sensitive to public opinion and input regarding areas we can improve. And I want to go back to a couple of things. We'll go back to the trademark. We're a bit flat-footed on the rollout of messaging regarding the new process and how to receive approval. We heard from you, and we fixed it. Anyone wants to use the trademark, there's now easily application process, and in many cases, they can be used freely. When we had to abruptly cancel the cheerleading season last year or dealing with the catastrophic loss of both coaches, we heard from you. We looked into any option that we could use to salvage the last two weeks of the season to include one bad idea that Kevin Fracking and I interim coach. Pause for laughter. Unfortunately, a quick solution did not present itself. We made some adjustments off-season, and the cheer squad is back in action. There are some controversial decisions that governing bodies must make. And there are some controversies that can be avoided. It is the ones that can be avoided and this area we want to improve. We want our people leaning forward and making firm, firm decisions and recognize that sometimes we need to pause and socialize ideas in advance to create a softer landing later. To the community, we are getting better. We were recently informed of some, some cases, sizable improvements in our academic achievements. We have streamlined our strategy. The middle school is going to receive a major renovation, a new scoreboard. The Supreme Court was here, and many other efforts happening in parallel. We want to compete and win along all lines of effort to include your hearts and minds. We are doing many things well. There will be places we can do better. And if you see them, please let us know, and we will try to fix them. All right, we're going to close there and transition to upcoming calendar records. Homecoming break. I will be there if anybody else is joining me. And I guess that's it. Is there a motion, Judge?
Some moved.
Some moved.
I know. I was close to that chair.
Monica, are we done?
Yes.